First up, poultry bar bid.
As you requested, I'm going to need to put together the information on the bids that were received. That's what I have in front of you there.
Excellent.
As, thank you. As you can see, the low bid, Goins Home Improvement is not bidding on the concrete. They do not have a crew to do so, but they are the cheapest bid for the building at $67,398.12. Reasonable Construction put in a bid for the building and concrete. They, of course, are the cheapest on the concrete, $31,932.80, with the building being $86,743.83. And you can see the following from there. The three at the bottom of your list do not include electrical work.
So Reasonable Construction did the whole, like a turnkey operation?
Yes, they can do the turnkey operation.
So you'd have one guy keeping track of everything?
Yes, we would have one contractor in charge of both. And I did check with Goins and Reasons to be sure that if Goins was to receive the building contract, Reasons would be okay to do the concrete and they could work together on that and they were okay with that. I did not commit to anything. I said, if this happens, I said it's up to the commissioners to decide, but we should be okay to work together. So we have options that way, whichever you would like to do.
So did Goins do electrical in that price?
Yes.
All three of those top ones?
The three top ones do have.
I just was curious because they didn't do concrete and didn't have anything marked there, so I'm just curious.
They didn't do the concrete. They do not have a crew large enough to pour that much concrete at the time.
So did your group have a recommendation?
The recommendation, you know, because we're taxpayers as well and we want to save the county as well. You know, we're fine to go with Goins to do the building and Reasons to do the concrete. However, we are also fine if you want to have one contractor, so we don't have any differences there or any issues there. We also see that Reasonable.
So if it was only a few thousand dollars, like 2,000, 2,500 bucks, it's kind of a no-brainer that you'd get with one contractor, so you don't even have to worry about that aspect of one's waiting on the other one and possible point of contention.
Let that be up to Jenny.
But when, yeah.
For 20 grand.
But when it's, yeah, closer to 20 grand, I don't see how you can possibly not split them, so that's my opinion.
I'll make a motion to award the building to Goins and the concrete to Reason.
Second.
Unanimous.
All right, and with that, when you had said that the county would take down the building, how soon would that occur?
As soon as we have signed contracts. So did they give you, I mean, I'm assuming they're probably waiting to see that they got awarded before they have contracts. So did they give you any indication when contracts will be ready to sign?
No, but we can get those fairly quickly.
Get them very quickly and just call me and I'll sign them, so we don't have to wait on another meeting. As soon as we've got signed contracts, I'll tell the guys to start tearing.
Do they have electric hooked up to those buildings now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There'll be a little bit to have that removed while we tear them down.
I figured it was still hooked up.
Yeah, it is still there and the water's still there. We're not planning on moving it either, so, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt, can I ask a question?
Yep.
So when this is completed, how will we know that it's been finalized and there's been a walkthrough, that type of thing? Who will notify us so we can make payment?
So when it's done, just call me and I'll, I guess, who drew up the plans for it?
Robert Kaplan. But since we should, my assumption is that it would go through area plan, since, you know, we're putting up a different building and the area plan inspector would inspect that, but I might have mistaken.
So does he do, like a final? Okay, we'll just go with the area plan.
We'll just let them.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
So good. Okay, next up, Nikki.
I have three travel requests. The first two are from a conference that they've already been to. It's somebody who didn't realize she needed to do a travel request. So they've got one from Mary Eater and Judge Doran went with her. And I have both of them. I'm not sure you've got Judge Doran's request because it just came in. But they send their apologies and understand what needs to be done from here on forward and said they cannot do that again.
I'll make a motion to approve all three.
Second.
Unanimous.
And I have a second one from Mary Eater for one in December that she would like to attend. She would take care of paying that. It's just a $20 fee. You'll have to make.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Unanimous.
And then lastly, I have a letter form for Bernie Health, which is the software used to instantly benefit involvements and it needs a signature from our commissioner.
So we would like to make a motion to sign it. I'll sign it.
I'll make a motion to sign it.
Second.
Unanimous.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Sherry.
I need your signatures to advertise to receive annual bids from 26. We'll open bids on December 4th.
I'll make a motion to sign.
Second.
Unanimous.
Okay, and I also have a letter of commitment that needs signed for Bridge 188 on ODMOS 50 for Federal Aid.
We'll do that in December. We'll file in December for the federal aid.
We have to file December 5th and it has, we also have to have the council's approval.
I'll make a motion to sign.
Second.
Unanimous.
Does that bridge out?
It's on sifted.
I don't want to sign this one.
Got to sign this in the bullet.
Oh.
Is it in the bullet, Barry?
Hmm. I don't care how much sugar you put on this one, it's still salty.
Maybe I'll taste that. You want to sign it?
He didn't even want to look at it.
He didn't even look at it.
It's like, get this out of my face.
Oh, no, I see that.
That's why we're trying for federal aid.
Hope it's there.
Thank you.
Is that all you have?
That's all I have.
Okay. While you're here, we'll skip one thing and go ahead down to the, under the new business where it says salt building invoices. So we were wanting to pay that out of the bond, but it wasn't listed on the bond. So I guess it has to be a matter of record that we're going to pay for that out of the bond, so.
I'll make a motion to pay the salt building invoices out of the bond.
I'll say.
Unanimous. So you're here and let's take care of it. Next up, Fairgrounds RV Camper Storage.
Matt, is that just the concrete or whatever the invoice that just got turned in for the salt farm?
Whatever invoice that Sherry had there at the end that needed paid.
It's like $30,000.
Okay.
That was the one that got wiped out in the storm or something.
Last year during the snow.
Yeah, well, I knew the salt farm, the salt building itself.
We already had the building paid.
Yeah.
Yeah, the building was paid for. It was the concrete.
So who's talking about Fairgrounds RV Camper Storage?
So currently, about this time of year, starting another week or so, we have people that are supposed to be coming in, moving into the arena with RVs, campers, boats. And it looks like the, and I spoke to Rebecca about this, the rabbit cages are currently in the arena and they need to be moved to another location and they feel that those cages need to be in an area where they can be locked. So I didn't know if there was some other space that we could move those to, if you all had an idea.
I just find it hard to believe that there's not room in that show arena over in one corner where they could still be stacked and still stay in that area.
That's currently, they're stacked on the, like, it's not even a half. It's like maybe a fourth of the arena of closest to the pig barn. That's where they are. I don't have a picture or anything of them, but they're stacked and they're pretty good. But there's just aisleways right there where those sliding doors are. But there, other than that, there's stuff in there as tall as I am and pretty much as high as we can get them. And I have them in there currently in case we don't get our new cages in time for the fair or we'll have to use those and then we can get rid of them. I've got to get one of them.
I think you know where I'm going with that. Go ahead, Jenny.
May I ask a question as to, I know in years past, campers and RVs and stuff were stored in the other commercial buildings. There's concrete floors in there and all that.
And there, those buildings, everything's rented.
Okay.
So there's still, there's still people utilizing different buildings for different things. But we've also, for several years, been, because here's the deal, I mean, you guys know this. The electric bill, the water bill, everything out there at Fairgrounds just keeps going through the roof and we're trying everything we can to bring in every penny we can to build. I mean, we're just committed to spending $67,000 additional money for a new building out there. So we've got to all work together and that's just the way it is. So I guess I haven't seen it. I don't know how much area that we're talking about we lost with them being there, but I certainly would not want to give up all the camper storage money to store cages that we're probably going to throw away.
You can't store them in the hog barn?
Well, they're saying they think it needs to be locked, but I mean, I would think if somebody was going to steal something, they'd steal those fancy goat pins.
I mean, right now, like, the dog, like, will be done with their practices around the 15th of November and they're going to move their stuff out of the way and that's going to be at least half the barn. I mean, if you're including, like, bleachers and the stuff that's always been stored in there with the campers, you've probably still got half the barn plus. But you just have, like, that, the cages are just taking up that extra space.
So how many campers do you have that you need space for?
Last year, we had almost 20 in there and they were in their type. We had a boat with a fifth wheel, so it's pretty bad. But I can go out there and look. I just was asking because Rebecca had brought that.
So basically, what's going to happen is we're just going to have to all come up with a plan and work together because she's committed to allowing people to store stuff there already. And you guys got that stuff in, which if we weren't building a new building, this wouldn't be a problem.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I guess I could tell you, you could bring them out to my house and store them on my buildings, but.
They should be able to probably let us please.
I know, and I really don't want to do that, but. So what do you guys think? What do you want?
Better just look it over and figure out a.
Yeah, get a definite number of how many campers have to go in that building and the size of each camper. And then we're just going to have to go out there at the tape measure and see what we can figure out.
What about the horse building? What's in them?
I don't, I don't think you could maneuver one in there.
They're that long?
Yeah, I think it would be tough, unless somebody had a little short one, but.
Okay, we'll figure something out. We may require some help if we have to move them. Get some FFA kids or something to come out here. That was what I was wondering, are the FFA people would let us put them in there?
I think they've got a lot of stuff.
I know they do, but I mean.
I don't know what.
I know Brad would probably open it up and let us look and I'm sure he'd work with us if we could, but.
We would, the one thing that I thought about is we could have put them in our showcase building, but I think they just put all the benches in that building, so I don't think, I think it's dubbed to the brim now. The one that's closest to the old bathrooms.
Yeah, we're just going to have to look. We'll figure it out. When are they wanting to come in, the campers, the first camper, when are they, like, now, yesterday?
Soon as I can make arrangements for them to do that.
So when does their, when does their term start? December 1st or November 1st?
It's November, but what I wanted to do is get everybody out there so we can put them in and maneuver so that we've got the boat in a certain location, that type of thing. So I just have to check.
Okay.
And the other thing that I had was Veterans Day is November 11th and the National Association of Counties, which is NACO, will celebrate their fifth anniversary of operating green light. This is the second year that we're celebrating in Jennings County. So this is, you'll see the green lights out front and that's basically what a lot of counties are doing. So Dan Brookbank, who's unable to be here, he has a prior commitment. He's aware and supports this initiative completely and we honor those who served and thank them for their service and sacrifice. So those green lights are a beacon.
Good, thank you. That's all you had, right?
Yeah.
Okay, next up, Clark, re precinct.
Well, Brenda from the election office is here. She can help fill in the gaps, but the short story is when the city of North Vernon redid their city council districts, that triggered the need to redraw precinct boundaries. And this is being, for lack of a better word, forced upon us by the state election division. So I don't, I don't think it actually, did I send you the information, Amy?
No.
Well, I have it somewhere. In short, there's a, Brenda, keep coming up and help me out. So what Brenda's asking for is, in short, I think there was a boundary line issue between Vernon East?
Vernon West.
Vernon West and one of the North Vernon precincts that's being fixed. We're combining, is it 1A or 2 through 4? I can't remember.
Yes, 2 through 4.
Okay, so all of the precincts, 2A, 2B, 3A, 3B, 4A and 4B in the city of North Vernon will be combined into three precincts, North Vernon 2, North Vernon 3 and North Vernon 4. And then I think there's some technical changes that are being made by this, by this re precincting. This does not trigger a need to redraw council districts or commissioner districts. It's simply just changing the boundary lines to comply with the census and the requirements of state law and the election division. Now, what, a couple benefits to this, by eliminating three precincts, we'll end up saving money in the long run. Not as many ballots to print, no more, less poll workers. Really, there, other than that, there's not much difference in what is happening now. All of those precincts were at the same polling place as they are. Again, this is just a, the state's requiring us to do it.
Because Indiana code says you can't have less than 600 voters in a precinct. So when we changed the, when the city council adjusted their lines, they considered that as a new precinct. So then that threw us into having to combine. So our, like, 2A only had 351 and 2B has 613. Combining them, it's 964. 3A has 437, 3D had 450. So we're getting those. And then 4A, 4B, 4A has 659 and 4D has 318. So it just doesn't make sense to have, it doesn't make sense, plus it goes against Indiana code to have that few voters in a precinct.
Let me sum it up. 1A and 1B in North Vernon are being renamed, but they're not being combined and that's because they're split between county council districts, correct? And then this also affects Center West, Love it and Vernon West precincts, this re precinct order, is that correct?
Center West, Love it and Vernon West just have technical corrections. There's no moving voters or anything like that.
And so am I correct then, what the election office is asking the commissioners to do is to sign this order and then you send it to the state? And then once the state approves it, there's a notice in the paper for anybody to object to the re precincting. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And that's when all the voters flood us with their complaints?
No, they have to, they have to file it with the Indiana Election Commission, not you guys. So if you do get calls, you want to directly to call them, then they have a hearing and they'll hear them out and decide whether or not to go ahead with them.
I'll just give them Alex's number.
Looking for them. Now, to be fair, this is not, we're not moving voters into a new precinct. It's just more technical of we're making our maps, match the state maps with the census.
But they, but some voters will have to move to a different polling location.
No.
No.
They won't?
No, because.
You've been combining the two?
Well, 2A and 2B were at the same location. 3A, 4B.
Hey, we're not moving polling locations on you.
Yeah, that's what's going to be the issue.
That was where I was like scared because I thought.
No.
Because the city council redistrict, there will be about 300 voters that will be moved into a different precinct. And they may or may not have to go to a different polling location, but it's very few. And that has nothing to do with the new incentive. That was something that they were required to do because they did a redistrict back in 2020.
So I guess where I'm at was, we've been told we have to do it at the moment.
I don't have really a whole lot of options. I'll make a motion to sign those orders.
I'll say.
Unanimous.
Thanks, Brenda. Sorry, that came in at 2:30 yesterday and I never got it sent over. I'm sorry about that.
It's okay.
We'll let you slide this.
Two things on new business, cornerstone perpetuation.
This is for the surveyor to, boundary markers, I believe, it's an annual contract. Or not boundary markers, monuments. And I believe what Chad told me is it's already in the budget. I just, he just needs approval and proceed.
Okay, do we have a document that needs signed?
In your blue folder.
Okay, so motion to.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll say.
Unanimous. Looks like it only needs one signature. And then the other thing is the GIS desktop pro migration plan E911. Assuming that's why Mr. Britt's back there.
It is. I just need permission to sign the contract. The money's already been budgeted, so I'm not asking for that.
Just for the record, what, just give a.
Quick.
Yeah, quick notes version of what the contract and how much money and.
Okay, so it's $13,479.68. It's a one-time upgrade. It's the software that talks to our computer at dispatching and basically shows the responder for a go.
I'll make a motion to sign it.
Second.
Unanimous. Is it in the blue folder also?
Yes.
Is there only one copy? I assume that you want one for the company and one for the auditor's office, but there's only.
There's one in your blue folder for signature and then you've got another copy in your other folder.
I just took Shane's, never mind.
Okay.
So Britt, do you need a copy of this to give to?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. You probably don't hear this enough, so I'm just going to tell you. You guys are doing an excellent job.
I appreciate it. You have a try.
I really like it when we have departments that I have zero complaints on. Not only on a weekly basis, a monthly basis.
Yearly basis.
Yearly basis. I've had zero, zero, so. Thank you. Okay, here's the other copy of that. Whoever needs it. And then, does anybody in the crowd have anything? Nothing? Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve prior minutes.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Unanimous. And I will entertain a motion to approve federal claims.
I'll make a motion.
I'll say.
Unanimous. You got anything else or you're good?
I'm good.
Beautiful quiet today.
Usually scared. Usually like it that way.
I actually like talking to you about ordinary stuff, but I don't like talking about legal jargon, because I know you're Charlie Brown's teacher. Oh, is everybody okay with that meeting on December twenty-sixth, the day after Christmas?
Whatever, don't matter to me.
Charlie, you okay with it?
No, that's fine.
Okay.
We always got to get one in there at the end.
We just need to be sure there's nothing booked on the agenda for that day, that is to sign the end of the year claims, and that's it, no business on that day, so. How'd you guys get done so quick?
Didn't mess around. You had a bunch of papers to sign in that blue folder.
Okay, last chance, anybody else got anything? No, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Unanimous, thank you all for coming.